Good evening and welcome to the August 15th meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Amaya Castillo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Maya. Not to be selfish, but she's also my daughter. Tonight's agenda is available on the counter along with Request to Speak cards. A reminder to everyone that Request to Speak cards should be completed and turned into the clerk prior to the completion of any staff presentation. For those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of this commission, please write Item A on your card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers, in order to be recognized, must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable, so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. With that, we will begin with General Administration Functions, Part One, Item A, Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda Within the Jurisdiction of the Commission, and I have three at this time, so we'll have the first individual come up, Ms. Wendy Motuca. Apologies if I pronounced your last name incorrectly. Have you pressed the button right in front on the mic below?
On the mic.
There you go.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Wendy Motuoka. I'm a West Sacramento resident. I own a home on Solomon Island Road, which is adjacent to Bridgeway Island Pond in the South Port area. A warehouse identified as 3640 Ramos Drive appears to be in the final stages of construction on the other side of Bridgeway Island Pond. Landscaping has already been installed between the building and the pond, and this landscaping is not compliant with the city code. City code articulated in the Plan Development 21 text requires a visual barrier between the warehouse property and the pond, specifically a vine-covered eight-foot chain-link fence fronted by at least 15 feet of landscaping, including a continuous tree and shrub screen. No landscaping like that has been installed, and in fact, it appears there is no room left on the property for that landscaping to be installed. When we went to view the plans, the approved plans for this project down in the Building Department yesterday, we saw that the approved plans did not include the required landscaping. When we tried to speak with city planner about the missing fence and landscaping, she told us that, on advice of council, she was not allowed to speak to us without her attorney present. That is outrageous. Is council for the city of West Sacramento really instructing city staff not to speak with Sacramento, West Sacramento residents about a matter of public concern? Homeowners on my street have been trying to get a meeting with the city staff about this warehouse project since February. City staff has been putting us off for months. How can residents of this community participate in its governance if your city attorney is instructing city staff not to engage with the public when the public expresses concern that city staff is failing to enforce city code? Can this commission look into this problem and direct planning staff to address the issue with the residents? And because it looks to me like there isn't room to put the required landscaping, I'm kind of smelling a request for a variance potentially coming, and I think the code is there to protect the pond, the people who recreated the pond, and the landowners who own property on the other side of the pond. That's why that requirement is there, that screening requirement and the landscaping requirement. That's us. That's us, and we just want to be heard.
Thank you, Ms. Motuca. Just wanted to remind the commission that we are prohibited from discussing issues not on the agenda brought to us at this time. We have our confidence in our Planning Commission staff that they'll reach out and hopefully address your concerns. We'll have the next speaker come up, Ms. Edna Bohannon.
Hi, I'm also another person who lives on Solomon Island Road. In February, I walked our neighborhood, and I spoke to over 30 different households about whether we had a concern about what was going on with the development across from the pond. All 30 people told me that they were worried about noise, about light, and about harm to the pond and the 188 species that reside in that pond. I too went down to speak with the city planning department, and I was treated, in my mind and in my experience, with such arrogance and as though I had no right to be there. I had already called and spoke to a city planner about my concern about the warehouses, seeing they were established in, the agreement was made in 1997. But what I was asking him about is, is there any way we could participate? He said, "The only way you can participate is if you buy the land." And I thought that was pretty cynical. So as a, I've lived in West Sacramento. I haven't lived Pacifically, but my family's been here since 1957. I graduated from West Sacramento schools, and I am absolutely appalled that the city of West Sacramento speaks to its citizens the way that I have been spoken to and have no regard for the concern and care we have for the pond. And the pond is a place where people can see wildlife, which is part of what West Sacramento's history has been. The open fields, the Pacific Flyway, and here we have a spot on this pond where people from all over the country come because we get birds and ducks that are supposed to be in Africa, but they land up here. And that, for the birding community, is an amazing thing to see. So we have something special, and I'd hate to see us misuse it or ignore it or treat it badly because we won't put up a Masonry retaining wall for sound. We won't do the proper things for lighting because lighting needs to be all downward, not upward. We need to deal with the noise factor, that the beeping trucks that are going to be there need to have a time limit on when they can start and when they can stop. But nobody at the city planning department was willing to talk with us and deal with our concerns. So I'm asking you, if you will consider our request, maybe even look, get a copy of the letter we sent to the city planning department and to the head of the, I might say urban development, but I know it's not that, community development. And I also know one of our committee members, because I started the committee, and there's five of us, has sent over, I think, 17 requests to be, to talk, and all 17 requests have been ignored. No response. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bohannon, for bringing that issue to our attention. Ms. Margaret Berry.
My name is Margaret Berry. I'm an environmental engineer, and I also live on the pond. I just wanted to throw my two cents in and say what a great asset that pond is to our community, as you know, Edna was mentioning. Every day, I look out my back window, I see people, you know, walking their dogs. It's really well-used. Fishermen are out there in the pond, you know, bird watchers. Every year, the kids come over from the elementary school, and they take, you know, field trips over there, and they look through little binoculars, real cute, see them out there. One of the reasons I, you know, the main reason I bought my house there on the pond is because of the pond and because of the birds. I love this, you know, I love this area. It's one of the reasons I didn't bail out when my house went upside down. I, you know, I love the pond. It's got big white pelicans, all the species that I've already mentioned. You know, and the residents really just want to see the right thing done with the screening and see that it's, you know, the codes are met. You know, I watch the thing being built, watch these big buildings. It's interesting to me, I'm an engineer, you know, like to see it go in. I was waiting for that landscaping, what's the landscaping going to look like? Because I love the landscaping on South Port, the way you guys have, you know, put it together where that's all screened makes it really nice interaction between the community and the residential area and the commercial area. So it's, it's great. I was expecting that, expecting to see something. And when it went in, I thought, wow, this is it. When we went down and looked at the plans, we thought, wow, this is it. So, you know, it's an asset that needs to be protected, and, you know, we'd like to see, you know, have some say in that if we could. You know, there's, like Wendy said, there's limited screening, particularly on the area where the trucks are going to be pulling in. There's no trees there. There's no trees between the truck area and the pond. I mean, at the least, you know, that's an area where it needs to, you know, be covered up a little bit. So we have, if we can just have some kind of input, we really appreciate it in the planning process or, you know, whatever decision gets made about what kind of landscaping goes in there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This time, there are no other Requests to Speak for Item A, so we'll move to Item B. Correspondence and Staff Communications for the Planning Commission's Secretary, Mr. Tilly.
No correspondence this evening.
Thank you. Item C, Disclosure of Expartee Communications. This is an opportunity for planning commissioners to disclose any communications they've had on the agenda items at this time. Start on the, on my left, Commissioner Sternfeld.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Brother.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Sablon.
Nothing to report.
All right. Commissioner Austin.
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Leonard.
Nothing to report.
Vice Chair Leibig.
Nothing to report.
And I don't have anything to report either. With that, we're going to the Consent Agenda, Consideration and Approval over the Minutes from the June 6, 2019 Commission meeting. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? Second by Commissioner Sablon. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose? No? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you. Regular agenda, Item Two on the agenda, Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Development Agreements and Modifications to Existing Conditional Use Permits for Commercial Indoor Cannabis Cultivation, Wholesale Cannabis Logistics Distribution, Transportation, and Cannabis Manufacturing at the 2505 Front Street. Mr. Laffey.
Yes, good evening, Chair Castillo, members of the Planning Commission. WCC management approved, WCC management received Planning Commission and City Council approval about a year ago for indoor cannabis cultivation, cannabis distribution, and cannabis manufacturing at 2505 Front Street, which is in the light industrial zone of the city. When they got their original approvals, it was for individual suites of the building. So the building had four suites, well, really two suites. One of them was for DICA distribution, which also got approval for cannabis distribution. And then the other suite, part of the requirements for cannabis originally was that they were separate and distinct. So we were showing on the conditional use permit and development agreement individual areas within the suite where they would do manufacturing, distribution, and cultivation. And that was in the conditional use permit and in the development agreement, those areas were shown. So what's before you tonight is to no longer have that separate and distinct area and just allow cultivate, indoor cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution within the entire building, anywhere in the building they wanted to do it. Because the problem, the issue that's come up is, it's operationally, and when they're doing their construction drawings, they're running into some areas where they want to kind of move stuff around, and right now, it's very limited on what they can do where. So the city council and planning commission already approved cannabis manufacturing, cannabis distribution, and indoor cannabis cultivation in this building, but just for separate areas. And what the applicant's requesting is to have it be a little more broad, allow for greater flexibility. So the staff's recommendation for tonight is to approve the conditional use permit and the resolutions, which recommend that city council approve the ordinance implementing the development agreement for the three uses, and also recommending that Planning Commission find the project is categorically exempt from SEQA pursuant to both the Class I and Class 32 exemption, existing facilities and infill development exemption. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is available to answer any questions, but he does not have a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laffey. Any questions to staff before we open the public hearing? Why don't I go ahead and open the public hearing and see if we have questions for the applicant at the same time? We're going to open the public hearing. With that, Commissioner Austin, any questions for staff?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Laffey. So I imagine that there may also be questions, there may be Commissioner's question, but could you provide a little bit of background on the rationale of modifying the development agreements, particularly like the content based on changing use?
Yeah, so the applicant requested a modification to allow for the cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution to be anywhere in the building. The original development agreement and this development agreement have an exhibit showing where in the building it can be done. And as part of the request, the city attorney's office also wanted to make some modifications. Every one of these, we update the template, so there are some other changes in the development agreement, more clarifying certain things and some, but for the most part, what was requested is to allow for the distribution, manufacturing, cultivation, to be able to do that anywhere in the building.
And so fundamentally, are we expecting a significant difference in the amount of payments that the city would be receiving basically changes to the development agreement? Or I see heads shaking now.
No, there's no changes on the revenue side of it, and that still would be addressed for each use in the building. And going forward, you know, the way, you know, they'll build it, you know, they will build the facility out, we'll still have, you know, detailed plans and, you know, it's not going to be a complete free-for-all, you know, within the building itself, but I want to make clear, we're talking about the same building, this overall same size of building and area that was going to contain these uses previously still would be the same now.
Okay. I don't think that's it for my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Leonard?
No questions.
Vice Chair Leibig?
Yeah, thanks, Seamus. Prior to, well, the first time we saw this, police and fire had already reviewed the plans. Do you see any need to send this back through, police and fire, given the changes?
No, they've, so another component of this is DICA distribution merged with WCC, and WCC is in for plan check right now for the former DICA space for distribution. And as part of that process, both police and fire have been really involved, both in the safety and security plan and then also just regular plan check for fire, fire code. So they've been involved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sternfeld?
Thank you, Mr. Laffey. So I think one of the benefits that we had as commissioners to having the floor plan map with the layout, it kind of gave us a sense of size and scope of each of the different operations, particularly when there were multiple operations in one location. And with just the green map, we don't really have a sense of that, and so I think it's helpful for us to understand kind of the business plan and model, like how much folks are planning on, like of the space dedicating towards cultivation versus manufacturing versus distribution from a space standpoint. Is there any indication you've been given that those kind of general business parameters in which we approved before are changing, or are they largely the same? And if not, maybe the applicant can speak to the plan?
Yeah, the applicant is here and can provide some more detail on what they're looking at in the future.
Do you want to come up and introduce yourself and who you represent?
Good evening. My name is Ryan Brown, the Vice President of Operations for WCC MGMT LLC. I was previously, I stood before you as a similar role for DICA distribution. And as I mentioned, as Seamus mentioned, the two entities have been, they've merged, and WCC is the surviving entity. In regards to our business plans, nothing has changed. There have been, when we started to get into the building and see exactly what we had to do in order to get ministerial authority, we found that the WCC side had a lot of work that we were not foreseeing. So we switched gears, and we wanted to really utilize the DICA side, and that was another reason why we wanted to do the merger, so that we could have access to that for manufacturing, because the DICA side was only licensed for distribution. So that led us to the decision of coming to you all and asking for flexibility for all three commercial cannabis activities across the square footage. We do have a schematic that is very detailed, that Lieutenant Steele has reviewed and gone through as well. So we're just trying to keep this as flexible as we can so that we don't continue, anytime we make a change, we don't have to come back and start all over in the process. Rent has started. We are paying rent. It's been quite some time that we've been paying rent, and we have no ability to offset that debt with any sort of revenue. So we're trying the best we can to get to where we need to be compliance-wise and everything else. We just need your help to open up the doors for us a little bit on the CUP and the DA to give us that flexibility to start sooner. The sooner we start operations, the sooner we can start to generate those fees for the city. If we're not allowed the flexibility and we have to utilize the old plan and go on the WCC side, it will take a lot longer from construction and everything else in order for us to get in and actually start working.
Great, thank you. I just, so I just want to make sure, to confirm, because what we have before us is just a jet, is a, everything in one space, so I would, I would, I'd like your verbal confirmation, city staff's confirmation, because we haven't seen the detailed plans that have submitted, that the intention in what's been submitted, city staff, is actually to have all three uses occurring in the space based on the construction plan submitted.
It absolutely is our intent.
Thank you. I just, I just, I needed to hear that. Appreciate it.
Sure. Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Berliner?
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Sablon?
No questions.
And Commissioner Sternfeld, I had the same question too, so I'm good at this time. Any, so we'll go ahead and leave the public comment open in case you, we have any other questions while we deliberate, but at this time, is there anything that the commission would like to deliberate on regarding this project? Any questions to the applicant before I close the public hearing? All right, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. If there are no comments, is there a motion that a commission would like to entertain for this item?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Planning Commission Resolution 19-7 PC. Do I have to list all of them? Sorry.
You can say remove the, Sacramento action.
Move to staff recommendation.
Great. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Commissioner Sternfeld. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. Thank you.
Regarding the action you took just now regarding the conditional use permit, that decision may be appealed to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 15 days of tonight's action, and of course, that appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. Based on your action tonight, we will now next bring this item to the city council for consideration of the development agreement at their, one of their September meetings.
Thank you. Move on to item number three, a public hearing regarding proposed development agreement on conditional use permit for cannabis testing laboratory at 2568 Industrial Boulevard, Suite 100. Mr. Hardy?
Chair, members of the commission, yes, before you is a project that is sort of the last piece of our cannabis process where we have licensed the other types. We have yet to have a laboratory come forth, so this is the first one. They're looking to occupy the 2568 Industrial Boulevard, Suite 100. The lab is approximately just shy of 3,000 square feet, completely surrounded by industrial uses of the same zoning, and then the port to the south, which is more intense industrial As I mentioned, it's a laboratory. It's defined in the zoning ordinance that was updated in March of this year and has very specific testing only, and that's all they're planning to do at the facility, is provide that laboratory component. Again, we don't currently have, it may allow the current and future other cannabis operations in town to utilize, business-to-business, to use the lab in compliance with state regulations should they, you know, strike a deal amongst themselves. The site has been reviewed by police and fire. Lieutenant Steele reviewed the plans. We met with the applicant on site. The security plan has been reviewed, and as the project is conditioned, the, both police and fire are supportive of the plan as conditioned. Notice went out. There was no inquiries whatsoever on the project of any type. The applicant is here with his team. If there's any questions, they don't have a proposed discussion, but we're aren't here to answer any of your questions. Staff is recommending to the, you know, project is exempt from SEQA as defined in the report, approve Resolution 19-PC, and recommend the city council adopt ordinance If there's any specific questions you have, happy to answer them.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing so we can, if there's questions for the applicant as well in the public hearing. Any questions for staff? Commissioner Austin?
Have we had this applicant group come before us, before for cannabis, cannabis project or no?
No, not this group, no.
In that case, I will have questions for applicants.
Thank you. Commissioner Leonard?
No questions.
Any, before I go down the line, any other questions for, okay, Mr. Hardy, no questions. We'll go ahead and, any questions for the applicant?
Indeed, yes.
All right.
So if you want to come up. So I'll state my question, then if you want to introduce your name and who you represent. So the cannabis industry is, at best entrepreneurial and at worst speculative, and so two things that I'm looking for, for applicants who are proposing to develop a business in this industry in our city is the demonstration of financial stability and backing to, as you just heard from the previous applicant, that they had to spend many months paying rent, waiting for, not just from us, from this, the approval, necessary approvals from the state. And then also, I'd also like to hear about your, who would be handling your business and any scientific work, so a brief resume, you know, you can talk for like a minute to three minutes about your team's credentials in that regard. So, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ian Hacinto, and I am the Operations Manager for Precise Readings Analytical Laboratory Services. I guess providing a little bit of background about myself, I have, I have my degrees in biology and business finance, and I have previously worked a little more than two years as a microbiologist in an analytical laboratory for testing produce prior to their distribution to groceries and other food sale establishments. Accompanying me tonight are part of my laboratory team, so first is Zorilla Guzman, and she is the laboratory director. She has degrees in chemistry and clinical laboratory science. She also has seven-plus years working in the laboratory, yeah, the laboratory setting in various fields of professional development, process control, and microbiological analysis. Next is our lead technician, Raul Barera, and he has his degrees in microbiology and chemistry, and also had, also has seven-plus years of experience in the professional laboratory setting. He has familiarization in operating and calibrating the equipment that'll be used in the laboratory.
Great, thank you. Could you talk a little bit about what sort of financial backing that you believe you have or experience in that?
Um, well, for the financial backing, financial backing for this project comes from a few private investors and other members of the LLC. I am one of four members, and I guess this type of support proves beneficial, especially with the cannabis industry still being difficult to borrow money for. industry still being difficult to borrow money for, like, for loans. But yes, it is pretty well, like, backed by private investors.
And do you know, can you tell us what industries the members of the LLC have been, like, working in?
Um, it's more like risk management, and, yeah, I would, I would just like, leave it there, it's risk management.
All right, that suffices my questions. Anybody?
Thank you, Commissioner Austin. Commissioner Leonard? No questions? Vice Chair Leibig?
No.
On my left, Commissioner Sternfeld, Commissioner Berliner, and Commissioner Sablon. And I have no further questions, so you're good for now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bring it back to the commission for any deliberations, comments. Commissioner Sternfeld?
Yeah, I just, this is our first full lab-only project that's come before us, and so we have approved projects for cultivation, distribution, manufacturing. And I know, in thinking kind of holistically about this industry and the opportunity that surrounds having a lab in the same area as these other businesses we've already approved, I'm actually excited about this project, which is weird to say for me, in particular about any cannabis project. But in terms of what it means in terms, as far as going full circle and having all the different players in the table within blocks of each other, and what the potential is there to create a real microeconomy of sorts in our town, to me, it's pretty exciting. And so I'm happy to support staff's recommendation at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Any other comments? We're getting close to public hearing. If there are any further comments, anyone want to entertain a motion?
I'd like to move staff's recommendation.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sablon. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. With that, we will go to general administration functions, part two, informal discussion. Anything commissioners would like to share?
I had a question, and I know we're not, we're not going to be speaking about presentations of the, by the public, on matters not on the agenda, but David, there were some statements made in that, that were concerning to me. One, the staff interaction, and I'm sure that that is outside of the purview of this commission, so I'm sure you will be on that. But then the other one would be non-compliance with, with our code. And I'm sure you're also on top of that, but at maybe a future date, if we can get an update. It would be nice to know now what's going on, as we have three members of the public come in.
Yes, I'm very much familiar with the matter that those residents brought for you this evening, and it is an ongoing matter that we are working on now. So once that, we get to a resolution on that, I have no problem reporting that back to the commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else commissioners would like to share? Commissioner Austin?
I would like to share that Mr. Tilly delivered a lovely presentation to the mayor's commission on climate change this month. And I would like, when it's appropriate for there to be a briefing on the staff's plans to do a climate action plan or other things that we can look forward to. So it may look like a timeline of what you're planning to do over the next, like, six to twelve months. It, I think it's particularly helpful when we know, for example, that large projects are coming, but also to know that land, large planning efforts are coming. It helps us get the word out informally to our networks, so that we can let folks know. So often, like, when we went through our last general plan and the ZOMP process, folks said, we sometimes hear from, from members of the public, that, oh, I didn't know it was coming, so I just want to make sure that there's as much lead time as possible, and that those of us on the commission can let interested parties know that public engagement is going to be happening. That would be fantastic.
Well, along those lines, at our next meeting, we'll be talking about our efforts on the Washington specific plan update.
Perfect, thanks so much.
Any other comments from commissioners? All right, before we adjourn, Commissioner Sternfeld?
Thank you, Chair Castillo. I wanted to request that we adjourn in memory tonight of a colleague of mine, Angel Carrera. He was the state's small business and disabled veteran and business enterprise chief. He is well-known throughout the state and every chamber of commerce as a champion for small businesses and disabled, disabled veteran businesses. And he passed away very unexpectedly yesterday here in West Sacramento. I just wanted to take a moment to appreciate his legacy and all he did for the small business community, and honor him this evening and adjourn in memory for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sternfeld, and sorry for your loss and the department's loss as well. With that, we will adjourn in memory of Mr. Angel Carrera. Media adjourned.